Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, December tenth at approximately seven P M. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I'm joined by my fellow board members Chris Weider and C.C. Van Tyne. We're also joined by our Town Administrator Blithe Robinson and our Executive Assistant Drew Fazardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, Blithe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Sure. After a public comment, we have several action items and those include considering the appointment of Barry LaRiviere as our interim Director of Public Works and to consider the approval of a number of licenses that are office issues at this time of year, liquor licenses, common victular, entertainment, Class One, Two, and Three auto dealers and taxi licenses, and they're listed in the agenda. And following that, to consider allowing some of the restaurants that have liquor licenses to extend their hours for New Year's Eve this year until two A.M. And finally, to consider a determination under the state ethics law regarding Mr. Kaliza of the Zoning Board of Appeals, a disclosure that he made to the board last year. For discussion items, we have a discussion with Betsy Pine about the Time Travelers Dinner for the Norfolk one hundred fiftieth anniversary. We will be passing over the discussion about the anniversary parade. The Mr. Terrio was not able to come at another commitment tonight. He'll come next week. We would like to discuss the submission of a letter to the MBTA regarding the impacts of derail service in Norfolk to system changes, a number of warrants to be approved, and a number of sets of units to be approved.
Very good, thank you. All right, our first item this evening is our public comment period. As per usual, we will invite anybody who is here joining us this evening to come up and speak with the board for about three minutes with the understanding that the board cannot dialogue back and forth, but more to bring concerns, comments, issues in front of the board for future follow-up if it's required. So with that, is anybody interested in joining us this evening? Mr. Denver, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Paul Denver from sixteen Winterbury. I've been with you folks before. Thanks for holding the meeting and inviting people to make comments. I have two comments. I understand from previous communications with you, from Ed Had that you're working on organizing a building committee with respect to the ongoing projects we have in town. And I would just urge you to move as expeditiously as you can in doing that and try to get a balanced committee that has accountants, engineers, attorneys, as well as people who have a general interest in the subject. I think it's vital that the town have confidence in the building committee as we go forward, particularly after the police station fiasco. And I don't know whether you can do that before you fully have resolved the problems that were created or that led to the police station problems. But in any event, I urge you to do it well before we have town meeting, before we have, the town has to address the construction. The second item is I sent you folks an email a couple of months ago about a communication I had with an H V A C contractor who informed me that his company would no longer do any work in Norfolk and that many H V A C companies had decided the same thing because of the great difficulty of doing work in this town, allegedly because of fairly arbitrary behavior and part of the building department. I'll leave it at that. I understand there may be personnel issues. And he told me that the H V A C Association had become involved and had communicated with the town regarding this issue. My interest is not in pursuing any one individual. My interest is in making sure that contractors feel as if they are going to get a fair shake in town. And I want, would like to know, and I don't know whether you can tell me now or tell me at a different time, that the H V A C problem has been resolved and that the association representing them is happy with what's happened or a reasonable compromise has been reached. I don't think the people of this town should be in a position where a number of contractors do not want to work in the town. Obviously, it's not good for the town in general and it costs money for consumers when the market is slimmed down by the fact that other people who can do the work are not in the market. So I hope you can address those problems and move forward. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else for public comment here this evening? Mr. Rosenberg.
Good evening. Three, I hope, fast things. One is I was going to request that the board consider adopting sections, the provisions of the open meeting laws that permit remote participation. That would be CMR twenty-nine dot ten. Blithe spoke to me a few minutes before the meeting started and she said that it is likely that that will in fact be on the agenda for a future meeting. So thank you for that. Second thing is I've spoken in the past about wanting increased citizen participation in town government and I'd like to again request that that be an active project in the future. And the last thing is I just wanted to call to the attention of the board and the staff of the town that there is a project that being conducted jointly by the Bloomberg Foundation, the Harvard Business School, and the Hartford Law School for City Leadership. There's a website that's cityleadership.harvard.edu. I think formally joining that project may be more of a commitment than Norfolk can make. But even assuming Norfolk does not join the project, there are cases online from other municipalities that have joined it and one can read what they've, the problems they've encountered, how they've dealt with them. And I think that the education is potentially useful even if Norfolk can't afford to be one of the cities participating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else for public commentary this evening? I'm seeing none. All right, on to our next agenda item. Please consider appointing Barry, I am so sorry, I'm just gonna say Barry, okay?
Sorry.
As interim Director of Public Works.
Thank you. So with the upcoming retirement of Bob Gay next, a week from Friday, we started into the process earlier this fall to seek his replacement through recruitment. While we had a good first round of interviews for various reasons, some of the candidates decided not to continue their following through the process and I'm not at this point where I'm ready to say that without being able to have a full thoughtful process that we're ready to make a permanent appointment. So discussed with Barry, who's our Assistant Director, who's been with us since July of eighteen, so a year and a half, and he is interested in stepping into the role on interim basis. Gives us a chance to work together on various issues in public works. I think that will be helpful for both of us while, and we have restarted the recruitment process again. So I don't have a timeline for you. Probably will be several months by the time we go through gathering resumes, interviews, and so on. There is a pay increase. It's more than Barry's making right now, less than the current director is making. But we're both satisfied it's a fair amount while we go through this process. So that's my request.
Thank you. Chris, C.C., questions, comments?
How do you pronounce your last name so that I don't massacre it?
La Riviere.
La Riviere. All right, so like La Riviera Beach, but without the ah. Okay, good. I just need to think of something.
Yep.
So I'll be the person to pronounce it. That's it, that was my only question.
Blithe, is it appropriate for us to ask what the increase was for him to take during the period he takes over as Director?
Sure. It's about fifteen thousand if I recall. Yes.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
That's per year, but?
On an annual basis, but you know, it's only for a few months.
Right.
No questions? No questions. All right, with that, I would move that the board ratify the Town Administrator's recommendation to appoint Barry La Riviere as interim Director of Public Works.
Seconded.
Nicely done, by the way.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Barry, thank you.
Thank you guys. What for to work it with you?
Hopefully it's not gonna be the Snowmageddon type way through that we're talking about.
It's a bold time to step into those shoes.
It's all right, we're all good.
All right, our next item this evening is to please consider approval of the following licenses expiring at the end of the year, liquor, common victular, entertainment, Class One, Two, and Three auto dealers, and taxi.
Seems to have a lot of people defrauding common victulars.
So a major responsibility of the Board of Selectmen in any community every year at this time of year is to renew all these various licenses for the coming calendar year. And so based on some advice from Town Council, we've listed every single business on our agenda. I guess the town of Adams got in trouble with the A.G.'s office for not doing so, so it looks a little different than they did in past years. And behind the agenda in your packet is a spreadsheet that Nancy's put together because she's taken the lead on this which shows you, it's in section four, shows you for each type of license, liquor, common vic, and so on, what the requirements are, the categories, and where we stand. For example, with liquor licenses, they need to make application, provide us a liquor liability policy, insurance. They need to have a inspection for, by the fire department and they need to be considered in good standing both by the treasurer for the payment of taxes and by the building department if their business is required to have what's called a one-ten inspection. You will notice that on all of these, the column for fire inspection is in red. That's only because they're in the process of doing those right now. And I met with the new fire chief and the deputy chief this morning for the building victual. They have made all of these inspections already at this point and we're confident that these businesses will not have any trouble meeting the requirements. So what we're requesting of you tonight is to approve each type of license on a conditional basis. The condition being that as long as by December thirty-first they have complied with all the rules, we will issue their license. If they don't, we will not and they will have to reapply. The only business that we are still having to work through is Silla's Coffee House to get the application filed and follow up on some paperwork. But otherwise, we're in very good shape at this point in the year. So by issuing the licenses, we'll hold on to them and then we'll let all the businesses know they've been conditionally approved. They can come in, pay for their license, and pick it up between tomorrow and the end of the year.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments?
What happens if something happens between now and the thirtieth where the condition would be, it would be revoked because they hadn't met a condition precedent, but they left with their certificate?
They're not leaving without having met them all, so they?
So you said they could pick it up tomorrow, but they were not?
If they have done everything, they could pick it up tomorrow.
Oh, okay, all right.
If they haven't, they wouldn't be able to.
So they don't pick it up until they've met all the conditions?
Exactly.
All right, I was then imagining that you're running around saying give it?
There's a lot of conversations going back and forth between Nancy, building department.
Yep, I get that.
Fire department. And the downside for the business, if they didn't, say it's a business that sells, it's a restaurant, they wouldn't be able to open and they'd have to reapply. So most of these businesses have been in business, you know, a number of years. They know their routine. It's more the department's getting around and getting all the inspections done.
Now, my question was just more when you were saying they could pick them up as early as tomorrow. I thought you meant all of them.
No, only their?
So then I'm like, well, how do you get it back?
Nope. So.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself from the motion for the Class One, Class Two, Class Two auto dealer license as I am one of the applicants.
Very well, and that is the only one, correct?
Correct.
Very good. All right, further discussion? Anybody? All right.
We scripted several motions for you to?
Oh, now I get back to my my motion script. All right, come in.
Go for it.
All right, so I move that the board approve and execute all liquor license renewals for two thousand and twenty subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment fees.
Second. Your second for the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that the board approve and execute all common victular license renewals for two thousand and twenty subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move that the board approve and execute all entertainment license renewals for two thousand and twenty subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I move that the board waive the Class Three hearing for Norfolk auto repair.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I move that the board approve and execute all Class One, Class Two, and Class?
Three.
Three auto dealer license renewals for two thousand and twenty subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Obstand.
And I finally move that the board approve and execute all taxi license renewals for two thousand and twenty subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well done. All right, our next item this evening is to please consider allowing liquor licensed restaurants to extend the hours on New Year's Eve until two A.M.
Yes, so these businesses can currently stay open until one A.M., but given that New Year's Eve is typically a eve of a holiday where people like to stay out a little bit later and enjoy, you know, company of friends and whatever at restaurants, the town has typically granted approval to the Eagle Brook Saloon, the Horse and Carriage, and Nevada's to stay open until two A.M. This year, New Year's Eve falls on a Tuesday night. So we're recommending that the board, as has done in the past, approve those.
Do they request this or do we just offer it?
I'll have to check back with Nancy tomorrow, but I think it's, I think we usually reach out to them saying, hey, do you want to do this again? And I think the answer is yes, but I need to double check with them.
More curious than anything else.
Yeah.
The thing at the top, I understand it's more specific in the motion, but it talks about allowing liquor licensed restaurants. But there are four liquor licensed restaurants in the list, only three in the motion.
My understanding is it's those are the only three that?
That want it?
That want it? You know, we can, I can, I'll double check with Nancy tomorrow if there's anybody else. We do have another meeting next week and we can take care of it. So I will do that tomorrow.
Chris, any questions?
No questions?
Who is it?
All right, with that, I move that the board approve an extension of hours until two A.M. on January first, two thousand and twenty for the service of alcohol for the Eagle Brook Saloon, Horse and Carriage, and Nevada's restaurants.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item tonight is to please consider a determination under G.L. Chapter two sixty-eight A subsection nineteen of Mr. Kaliza's disclosure as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So approximately a year ago, Mr. Kaliza submitted to the town clerk's office the form that's covered for two sixty-eight A section nineteen regarding the Lakeland Farm, the Lakeland Farms subdivision project and that because his spouse is a Realtor and was going to be representing the owner, he was recusing himself from that process on the Z.B.A. He took almost all the steps to file that correctly. The step that was missed was bringing to the appointing authority for the Z.B.A., which in our case is the Board of Selectmen. We had a question from a different resident about his disclosures. When I went down to talk with the town clerk, she showed me the form. I said, well, we're missing this one section. Mr. Kaliza then decided to pick it up from the town clerk, bring it upstairs, and get it over the finish line, so to speak, by asking the board to approve it. So it's a little bit late in the process, but he wanted to wrap it up correctly. So that's why it's on your agenda tonight. I think the project's essentially done, so it really doesn't have an effect, but?
Well, the project's not done.
Well, it would have an effect because the project is not completed. So if there was anything, if there was a modification to the special permit or the comprehensive permit before the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Kaliza would not participate.
Yep.
And I think that's what he's referring to.
Yep, yep.
So is this just prospective? I mean, you're not?
It usually is.
No pro-tunque retroactive, back-to-the-b beginning thing?
I'd have to check with the state. I mean, generally, these things are hopefully done prospectively and?
That's what it looks like, that he, that, but it's written there was no conflict of interest.
Well, he didn't, you know?
As opposed to there will be none going forward? You see that what Chris has said?
I think it got confusing because really, the project was, the comprehensive permit was approved for Mr. O'Hart, which at which time there was no Realtor identified, which Mr. Kaliza participated in that. Once the project was sold, after we had issued the comprehensive permit, Mr. Kaliza's wife was appointed the Realtor of Record. So during the comprehensive permit, Mr. Kaliza's wife had nothing to do with this property. It was only post-comprehensive permit that she did. So I think Mr. Kaliza was taking the move to make sure that the, we approved her, that there was no conflict of interest going forward if there was any modifications to that comprehensive permit.
Those are details I wasn't aware of.
So I guess what I'm asking, I guess there's no, I am asking a couple of questions. So you're saying that if we vote in favor of this, we're saying that there was no conflict, that we know that there was no conflict of interest at the time Mr. Kaliza had not yet recused himself because it was at the Mr. O'Hart portion of the process. But this is essentially saying, we're saying there was no conflict of interest for him to vote when he voted.
This came in about mid-December last year. So I don't know the timing of the project.
The comprehensive permit was already approved by then. So I think this is post-comprehensive permit.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm just trying to get at is? It's not clear to me that this is ready for me to vote on because this is written that there was no conflict, but I don't know what happened before December of two thousand and eighteen. And then it's, does this mean, to Chris's point, if this is just saying retroactively there was no conflict, does that mean it was not covered prospectively?
I would say it's from that point forward that when his wife became the Realtor of Record?
But it's not written that way. So you're gonna need to change the motion to say there was no conflict and there will be? Well, because I get that he's gonna continue to recuse himself.
Yes.
And that means, but I feel like if he's trying to dot i's and cross t's?
Yep.
So we would reword it to say there was no conflict of interest from the point of issuance of the comprehensive permit? No, because we would still be speaking retroactively?
There was no conflict of interest for when, the points where he recused himself? Or if he recu, like, I don't know, it just seems?
Maybe there was no conflict of interest with his involvement in the Lakeland Farms forty-B project from the point of?
His filing the form and?
His filing the form or when it was, the project was sold. I mean, I think maybe putting in that detail that draws the timeline.
So this form was accepted on December twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
So anything from December twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen thereafter?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Really makes sense to you, Chris?
No.
Because I don't think we can vote on something that predates the form.
No.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
No.
No. All right, in that case, I would move that the board vote to determine that there was no conflict of interest from December twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen with regard to Mr. Kaliza's involvement in the Lakeland Farms forty-B project, given his disclosure that he recused himself from the process.
And will continue, and will continue to do so.
And will continue to do so through the end of the project, correct?
Second.
Second. Do I hear further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good to have that tied up. All right, our next item this evening is to please discuss the plans for the Norfolk one hundred and fiftieth anniversary Time Travelers Dinner on May ninth, two thousand and twenty. Welcome, Betsy, how are you?
Good evening. So I wanted to be here tonight just to announce to you three and to the public that this event is going to take place because when the funds were awarded at the town meeting, there was no mention of any party. And so I just want to make sure that you all approve that that's what we're gonna do. And I wanted to tell you what I've done so far. I have a committee put together of about ten people in addition to myself. We're gonna take care of lots of different things. And we're gonna celebrate on Saturday, May ninth, at the King Philip Middle School, starting at five o'clock. I'm just gonna read right from here so I don't forget anything. Time travelers are distinguished citizens from Norfolk history who have made the journey to wish Norfolk a happy birthday. Some of the time travelers are descendants and/or admirers who are playing a role of the distinguished person that they admire. I don't have details about what the tickets are gonna cost. There is one change from, I think, what you have written in your packet, and that is I'm gonna limit tickets to two hundred and fifty people because it seems like a huge number, even at two hundred and fifty. The room could accommodate three hundred, but the caterer that I'm talking about, talking to, suggested limiting to two fifty and then he will cook for three hundred and only bill me for two fifty. But that's the way we control number of people and how hungry they are. I expect in the next week or two to have a website just for the party. Jim Lehan is my treasurer and he's gonna have a bank account, a website. People are gonna be able to buy tickets online using PayPal. And I figure there are many people who might not know how to use PayPal or want to use PayPal, so they're gonna, we'll also have them available at the town clerk's office.
Great.
I wanted to have the tickets to be really inexpensive when I started out, but I've decided that they're gonna be a little bit more money so that we can have a really nice dinner. I don't think we should economize so that we have a twenty-dollar ticket and not very good food.
Mm-hmm.
So that was, that was my decision. So I just want to make sure that you all agree with what I'm doing so that I'm not just out there with nobody knowing and then people start maybe being unhappy with what's going on. Any big decisions that I make, I'll run by my committee and have a vote, so it's not just me out there. And let's say, for further information on tickets and the party, check the town webpage. We're gonna be, we're gonna have a link on the town webpage that will bring you over to the Historical Commission's webpage and then that will have a little description of the party, cost of the tickets, when you want to buy a ticket or when the tickets go on sale. There'll be a button to pay on PayPal. So we, thank goodness for PayPal, that will really help us. Haven't decided exactly when tickets are gonna go on sale, but we have put together a mailing list of all former selectmen who are vertical and, you know, reachable and some who are far away. We're gonna send them invitations, very pretty picture on the cover.
Oh, there it is.
We're gonna have an art show of all the Horace Hamlin paintings. That's a Horace Hamlin painting.
It's pretty.
Roy Hamlin is gonna be one of the time travelers and he's gonna come as Horace Hamlin. And Mr. Chris Weider is gonna be a time traveler. I'd have to get through for it.
Does Chris know this?
Yes, he does. So if you could pass this to him, this is a biographical sketch.
Don't tell them.
Oh.
Oh, is it gonna be like a surprise?
It's a surprise. We have a lot of surprises. I haven't decided if I'm gonna publicize all the names of all the time travelers, but I've got about a dozen of them and it's gonna be very fun and very exciting. And anybody who wants to be a time traveler can come. If you want to come, is your aunt now who was active in the Centennial, go for it. It doesn't have to be someone who wants to speak, but I'm trying to arrange it so that the twelve time travelers that I'm working with are gonna speak. And they're gonna say what their activities were in Norfolk and why they're here and why they wanted to wish Norfolk a happy birthday. So we're gonna have a nice dinner, we're gonna have a big cake and no alcohol. We're gonna have art, we're gonna have music from the King Philip Chamber music groups. So we're very excited and we're getting underway. And I think by March, I should be selling tickets. But I'm gonna get, all the people who are on the mailing list, the V.I.P.s, are gonna have a chance to buy first. But I'm gonna get, all the people who are on the mailing list, the VIPs, are gonna have a chance to buy first. Because we didn't wanna have someone like Frank Gross or not be able to get their ticket because we sold out.
Right.
So, but doesn't two hundred and fifty sound like pretty substantial money?
Sounds like a nice manageable, yeah, it sounds big.
No, it.
It sounds huge to me. It's a little scary.
Does the venue, not that I'm the hardest core drinker in the world, does the venue not allow for alcohol?
I know, I was thinking, I was thinking it would be nice to have a glass of wine.
That's what I'm, I'm, because it's a school. Right, just to, you know, sort of prolong the night and interact with it.
Celebrate, happy birthday. But if we do, it's gonna have to be sparkling cider or something, because there's no alcohol allowed at the school.
Right.
So in many ways, it makes it easier, because it's less complicated with no alcohol. So that's a biography of the individual that you're interested in.
It says he drank before he went.
He had it, he had it.
So I have to, I have to stay in roll. I'll make sure I, I do it after.
All right, so I need my invitation back, that's my only copy. But that's a picture of Norfolk Town Hill around nineteen seventy-five. And when we make the invitations, they're gonna be smaller, because this is kind of big for an invitation. And we're gonna ask people, do you want us to save you a seat, or are you not coming? You know, there's gonna be an RSVP card. So that's it. But I was, I was awarded, or the town budgeted, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the, for the party, which is a little scary, because it's not very much money. But that's gonna take care of all the administrative things, like paying for the kitchen help, the custodian, the invitations, the postage, all that stuff. I think also might have to pay a policeman, I'm not sure. And then the tickets, my goal is that the tickets cover the food only, so. That's the plan, so I wanted everybody in Norfolk to know that this is coming, May ninth, save the date. And also, I wanted your approval that this is what you guys think is a good idea.
It seems pretty cool.
Yeah, speaking as an individual, not a representative of the board, not only does it sound like a fantastic event, but thank you so much for doing all this work to put it together. I know it's been a long time coming, you've been working on it for a while now, you and the committee?
Yeah, we started thinking about it before May town meeting.
Yeah.
And I was scratching my head over it all, all summer, talking to Chris and other people. And it's amazing, so many people, when I tell them about it, they say, oh, I wanna come, and I wanna be Miss Day, or I wanna be Agnes Bristol, or there's a lot of colorful, wonderful people in Norfolk history, so. Hope to get Miss Day here. It's not booked yet. So that's it.
Beautiful, again, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Betsy, is there any? My only concern is, depending on the price of tickets, is there gonna be some seniors.
Oh, that's a good point.
Who are gonna, who, obviously on fixed budgets, it makes it difficult for them, so are we gonna, are we gonna?
That's what I was thinking of.
That's the only thing I'm wondering, should we make some small provision for, and it's hard, but for seniors who.
It's hard to draw the line, because guess what?
Yeah.
Everybody that participated in the centennial is now quite senior.
Yes.
And anybody that participated in the centennial who's vertical really wants to be there.
Yes.
So I can't just say.
Do you have a senior discount maybe, or some kind of discount for them?
Senior, what's senior, eighty-five?
Right, exactly.
Ninety?
Well, we have to.
I, I've, I've been thinking about this for months. And at one point, I was saying, anybody that had to fly in should get a free ticket. Or any time traveler should get a free ticket, but a lot of time travelers are wealthy, and they can very well pay for their meal. So it's, it's something that's still.
Mulling over.
Mulling over, and it's hard to draw the line.
Right, that makes sense. I mean, if you've got a function where you know a small handful of people may be sort of in that inneed category, you could probably come up with a way of sort of pooling resources to comp some tickets. But where your sweet spot for guests is that category, if everybody's comped, then you've just paid out of pocket from the library, or from the, rather, from the historical commission for two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and I'm scared of going over budget, you know, we're in the middle of the night.
I mean, I think, I mean, maybe there's someone out there who really would like to be there, who we know has, is on a, as needed.
I bet there's an as needed.
So I think there's something we have to look at on an individual basis.
There are people who, who were very active in the centennial, who are not wealthy. And I'm thinking that that's an intersection that I would wanna set aside. Anybody that plays music from the band, from the KP Band is gonna get a free dinner, I can't charge them for playing. I gotta pay them and give them a free dinner, so depending on how many of them show up, but if I feel myself running out of money, I will come and visit you.
Talk to Chris.
So I don't.
I'll pay for my ticket, even though I'm gonna be a time traveler.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. I don't wanna be hauled off to jail, you know, but.
I'm gonna be drinking before then, it doesn't matter.
But this, this is something that we can.
I'm Chris's bride, it doesn't matter, drive it again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
All right, since we will not be talking parade this evening, our next item is to please consider the submission of a letter to the MBTA regarding impacts to commuter rail service in Norfolk due to system changes. So since I kinda did this one, I'll get a little bit of background. Over the course of the last eight weeks or so, I've been getting some feedback from Norfolk commuters identifying the increased frequency and delays and cancellations in some cases of some of the Franklin Line commuter trains. I myself typically commuted to Boston as well, and I've experienced some of these delays, sometimes both on my inbound and outbound trips into the city. I decided to do a little bit of research. Apparently, we're not the only ones feeling these impacts, they're being raised by residents all across the Franklin Line, but mainly, it seems to be in Walpole, Franklin, and Norfolk. As such, reached out to some of our state representatives, who gave me some more background on the situation related to the beginning of a Foxborough pilot program, to identify another train that would go out to Foxborough that would be working off of the same line as Franklin. A lot of this kind of aligns with the timing standpoint to the beginning of that pilot program. So with that, I did see that there were some responses put out there, both from Keolis and from the MBTA, identifying that there'd been an action team developed, and that they were addressing these issues, but, you know, while you assume that there is gonna be some level of adjustment with any new process, these have been reoccurring with no real end in sight, and the response from the action team that I saw online was centered around issues related to leaves on the tracks, and train control safety systems, and conflicts with other trains on the lines. And it just didn't seem like we were getting to what the apparent core of the issue was. So with that, I drafted a letter that I would like the board to consider sending as a municipality to the general manager of the MBTA, simply identifying that we've been hearing a lot of this feedback, we've been seeing it firsthand. We understand that there's been some motions made, but we'd like to see something a little more tangible in terms of the response, and how we're gonna track to ensure that the efforts that are being put forth are effective. So I did draft a letter that's in the packets. I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to breeze through them, but I would welcome any inputs or considerations.
Do you have a second page?
There was no second page, there's one page.
Yeah. I always like a reply, a date for reply. I think the only thing is, this just doesn't have us, you know, please get back to us by, or give us some kind of response by.
Oh, that's a good point. Look forward to hearing from you by.
Yeah, so I noticed that.
Makes sense.
You've anticipated timely response by exchange before I lose my marbles.
Otherwise, I found it to be positive and correct. Do you wanna know what's going on?
Yeah, I would, I would echo what you've said, I also commute on the commuter rail. And I also have the background of Sean, my husband, he's the state representative for our community, was one of the people who was, pardon the pun, railing against the new line, you're welcome. You guys can all use that one at your leisure. When they were first suggesting it, and oh, it was gonna be so, it, it, it's been a bad idea from the get-go, but he got no traction, because the government wanted to do Mr. Kraft a solid at the taxpayers' expense, and so in it went. And you're right, almost, I think, to the day, not even, to the day, we lost a bunch of, of lines that a bunch of people, including a bunch of people with kids at Severian, relied on to get their kids to and from schools. And people relied on to get their kids from other places to and from school, and also to and from work. But notwithstanding the fact that we lost trains that we're not gonna get back, we, the ridership on the ones that stayed tanked, like, just, they were delays and delays and delays. And I think it was to your point, or a couple of other people mentioned it well, as well, there would be these delays, and they would, they were all attributed to medical emergencies. And in the ten years that I've been riding the commuter rail, multiple times a week, I've maybe had two or three medical emergencies, and then people are getting two a day. And I think that they're just attributing delays as a result of the Foxborough line to medical emergencies, because they know people are less inclined to complain when they think that it's a fellow citizen who's had an issue. So I think that it absolutely tracks, the first day of the Foxborough line is when our situation derailed. Okay, all right, now I'll stop, I'll stop. So, ah, that one just came to me, I'm just so proud of that one. So I think that this letter is a great first step, I don't know what else we can do. You know, frankly, before the train even came in, when all of these issues and the, and the townspeople in Walpole were in minutes, you know, were impacted, it all fell on deaf ears, but I'm hopeful that maybe now, with all of the other issues, that the, the, all of their other sort of the things that they've insisted on doing are falling apart, maybe they'll be a little more receptive to the average non-billionaire citizen who has issues. So I like how this is written, just, I agree that it's, it's a bigger issue than, than people realize. There are thousands of people being impacted by this decision every day.
We do keep referencing the letter, does it make sense to read it, or?
Just have it available online, I think.
Just have it available online, okay.
Yeah, we can put it on the website and say, we've submitted this to the state, we've responded, you know.
Mr. Rosenberg?
So the letter starts out by saying, you're writing on behalf of Norfolk, Walpole, and Franklin. Was the intention to get people from Walpole and Franklin to sign the letter also?
It absolutely was. I did reach out to representatives from both of those towns, and they have both since declined being included on the letter.
Declined to sign?
They did.
But you're still gonna?
Still gonna send it from Norfolk, you got it.
Well, I'm sorry, you're still gonna leave the line that says, on behalf of?
I will be leaving the line that says, we are writing today on behalf of the thirteen thousand Norfolk residents. We will be removing the Walpole and Franklin.
Ah, good try, I'm sorry, they declined.
Did they say why they declined?
They did. Walpole, obviously, is still not feeling great about how things shook out after their long battle with that pilot program. I think that they're kinda spent on, you know, fighting with the MBTA, so I think that they declined just because they've already gone down this road, and they didn't feel like they really wanted too much else to battle with MBTA. Franklin, on the other hand, identified that they had not heard many complaints from their residents, which was curious, seeing as how there will be a.
I was just gonna say, isn't there some sort of a meeting?
In Franklin, held by their state representative, so.
And who is very responsive to his citizenry, and if they didn't have an issue, he would not be holding a. I mean, he's a great guy, I like him, he's not gonna just randomly hold a meeting
Right.
for his citizens if they have not indicated that there is a problem.
Right.
So is this just a particular individual who is speaking on behalf of the town?
At, at first, we reached out to the chair of the select board of each of the towns, or of the town council. We didn't hear back from either of them, so then we moved it to the town administrator or town manager from each town, and those are the two who responded.
And I get, I can get fatigue on the part of Walpole, but when is the meeting in Franklin? And the only reason I'm asking is because a letter written on behalf of thirteen thousand Norfolkians is great, but if you had an additional thirty-two thousand Frankloneans, I don't know what they're called, but they, um.
I will see the.
That might resonate, and if their meeting is soon, maybe we say, hey, we've done this letter, it's all ready to roll. What do you guys, right? I mean, I don't know, I don't mean to co-opt your letter, I just think that it has more
No, it's exactly the intent.
strength with numbers.
So I'm headed to a MECC meeting tomorrow morning, which I'll see the Franklin Town Administrator, so let me take another run at it with him.
And that meeting is on the seventeenth, Cece.
So I'll talk to Jamie tomorrow and ask him to re, rethink it.
I mean, because I don't see any downside, I sur, I guess I can, I see fatigue and thinking, well, what good is it gonna do? I mean, they did a lot, they had signs and bumper stickers, and I still have signs and bumper stickers in my garage. And it was incredibly frustrating for them, but I think where's the harm? I, in, in trying again, you're gonna make the administration angry, what are they gonna do? Screw up our rail travel? They've already done it. Like, what, Bob Kraft's gonna get mad that I'm, you know? I, I don't think he cares about me, so, um, I don't know, it'd be worth maybe adding, taking another stab at getting some more help. But I do like the letter.
So we'll hold off on sending the letter until after the meeting on the seventeenth?
Or tomorrow, if you can get them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow and see where we're at, let me know.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, concerns related to the MBTA service letter, other towns? Nope, all right.
So you need to move on it? It's got a little motion.
It does have a motion?
It does. Look it, here. Move that the board approves the submission of the letter to the MBTA.
All right, I would move that the board approve the submission of the letter to the MBTA.
Nicely done. Seconded.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
That's what I'm here for.
All right, we have some warrants to go through. Looks like you're up first, Chris.
Please consider approval of the following warrants. Eleven nineteen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of two million four hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. On eleven nineteen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Chris, I'm, I'm gonna, you're gonna kill me, I'm gonna channel my inner Chris Weider and ask, shouldn't you be moving?
Shouldn't I be?
Saying that you move that the board approve, you said please consider.
I didn't say approval?
No, you said, are, are, are.
I'm sorry.
Move the board, right?
Please consider approval of the following warrants.
No, make a motion, make a motion, you gonna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
There you go.
To move that the board approve the following warrants. On eleven nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the amount of two million four hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. On eleven nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the amount of one thousand dollars.
He made up that time. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the board approve the following warrants, eleven nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And eleven twenty-two, two thousand and nineteen, eight hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
So I'm, second.
Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I move that the board approve the following warrant. Eleven, eleven twenty-six, twenty nineteen, in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty and forty-three cents. Yeah, I messed that up pretty badly, but you got it. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I move.
So well done.
That the board approve the following warrants. Twelve-three, two thousand nineteen, the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. And on twelve-three, two thousand nineteen, the amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Not our cleanest warrant period, but we finish strong, thank you, Chris and Cece. The last item is to please consider approval of some meeting minutes this evening.
All right, so I had, I've had the benefit of reviewing these both on my little phone, and then finally getting a look at them in hard copy as well. And so I move that the board approve the minutes of April thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, which I will acknowledge predated my existence. So I was basically just looking for typos. May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, also have nothing to add, because I was not present. September fourth, two thousand and eighteen, December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. So I under, September tenth, I'm gonna have to clean this up, let me stop. I move that the board approve the minutes of April thirtieth, twenty eighteen, May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, September fourth, twenty eighteen, December sixth, twenty eighteen, April thirtieth, twenty nineteen, September tenth, twenty nineteen, and November fifth, twenty nineteen, regular meetings.
Second.
So for discussion purposes, I just wanna be clear that I've read April thirtieth, twenty eighteen, May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, September fourth, twenty eighteen, December sixth, twenty eighteen. But I wasn't there, so if, they look good to me, but I can't say for certain that there was anything that happened, but I have no reason to doubt, so, right, I don't think anybody who's taking contemporaneous notes is adding things in, things in that did not happen.
These are all notes that I approved, correct?
Yes.
Oh.